Mr. President, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Cockhill?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mrs. Intahar is absent this evening. Mr. Roman?
Here. Ms. Panopoulos, would you please say this in the public room?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We go. First item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Good evening, board members and community. On a committee, the whole main, we generally don't have a superintendent's report. However, tonight we've got two brief topics that needed to update the board on, two items that really couldn't wait for different reasons until our next meeting in November. And first, I'd like to introduce two gentlemen are here this evening from the Friends of Wheaton North, John Kirschbaum and Eric Pierce, are just going to give a brief update on the Wheaton North gym. And I know I've sent some photos along to the board, but I'd certainly like to have them come on up to the podium here and give us a brief update because by the time the next meeting comes around, we're going to be at a different point than we are today. Mr. Kirschbaum.
Do I need this?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess you can get into it.
The recording, it'll take a couple of seconds for it to activate. Is the green light on?
There it is.
There it is.
Good evening. My name is John Kirschbaum and Eric Pierce. We appreciate the few moments. I wanted to give you a brief update. The dirty work is done. Old bleachers are gone. Floor's been sanded. Graphic's package is down. Final finish is going on. We should be done with the floor on Monday. Bleachers should hit the week of the 4th. Not sure exactly what day yet, so it will be done by the 25th of November. And looking to reopen the gym officially the 13th of December. That's the first home basketball team for the boys. So there will be a little announcement coming out reminding board members and hoping that you'll attend. I can't tell you how thankful we are to the whole staff at Wheaton North and how well they've treated the folks and how blocked they've been. It's been a real easy project. And with any normal amount of luck, we will be able to open those doors on the 13th and get the basketball season started. So we appreciate that. I apologize, I intended to bring some photos tonight. Unfortunately, sometimes computers don't necessarily do what you want them to do. So there will be some more photographs sent out over the next two or three weeks. So with that, any questions? We'll take it. Otherwise, I'll get out of your way. And if you'll accept our apologies, we're going to skedaddle out of your meeting as well. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless there's any questions, I appreciate John and Eric coming this evening and just giving a brief update. Thanks again for all your work. Things are right on schedule and looks totally different and they're fantastic. And now we've got to wait for the floor to cure and we'll install the bleachers right on target. So that's where we're at. Unless there's any questions from the board.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, John. Thanks, Eric. The second item this evening is another timely item, and it's timely because of the state and the delay of releasing the information to us, to the school district. And that is the details of the survey that students, staff, and parents took last spring, the Five Essentials Survey. We did not give the board an update because we didn't have the information at the last meeting when Faith updated on every other piece of student information that we had as part of our school report card. But the Five Essentials is a new part. There was a lot of errors along the way. I'm going to let Faith talk about that. But we felt like before, they're going to release it on October 31st to the public, to the media. And we certainly want to make sure the board has at least some information prior to it being released. And I'll turn it over to Faith and let her fill in the blanks along the way here.
Thank you. As usual, the data gets released to the press ahead of time, and I'm fielding a lot of phone calls as they're getting ready to roll out all of their articles. And on October 31st, they are not only going to have access to the traditional school report cards that we've had with all the different charts and the information on ISAD and PSA and demographics, all of that, there's still going to be that card. But in addition to that, there are going to be two new, different report cards. One that's interactive online that parents and community members will be able to click on and see what that looks like. However, they have not released that template to any of us yet. So I was hoping I could show you exactly what some parts are going to look like and what date is going to be, but we don't have that yet. So hopefully it's coming. I'm checking my email every few minutes here to see what we're going to get. In addition to that, there's going to be an at-a-glance report card that can be accessed from that same online piece. And it's going to be a little bit different in that it's going to still talk about school performance and climate and learning conditions, but it's also going to have some of the school awards and special programs, courses, extracurricular activities, types of things. And then also the college and career readiness. And there are different parts of that, obviously, at elementary, middle, and high school. And then there are these growth scores where, prior to this, we're used to looking at data, those students that made the meets and those students that made the exceeds, and then that's it. They are now using growth charts to show whether students moved from a category of below to an upper category, a higher category of below, whether they moved from meets to exceeds, whether they moved from one portion of meets to a higher portion of exceeds. Very complicated math behind all of that, which is going to be fun to explain. But that is also going to be on this. And then the Five Essentials Survey information, which we talked a little bit about, but I want to kind of refresh everyone's memories about that. This is the graphic for the Five Essentials Survey. And these are all the people that took the survey. We had all of our teachers, K through 12, our students, 6 through 12. That was a state decision, not us. K-5 didn't have the opportunity to get. And then our parents also had the opportunity to take the survey. And here are the main things that that survey measured. And then this begins to talk about specifics under each of those. With the effective leader piece, there are a couple of criteria, but the amount of trust between teacher and principal, and also the principal as an instructional leader. Collaborative teachers, and some of that is the collective responsibilities through all teachers' team to meet the needs of students, and also the quality of professional development. Then involved families, and that goes into how we do on outreach, and also how we would rank on teacher-to-parent trust. The level of supportive environment, which covers things like safety and how well we explain the expectations for post-secondary. Then that all fits into ambitious instruction, which deals with things such as course clarity, English instruction, math instruction, and the quality of student discussion. And that all is being answered through questions from these different groups. The ambitious instruction is really coming from survey responses from student measures. Effective leaders is based off of teacher questions. Collaborative teachers, that's the teacher's assessment of themselves. The involved families, that's from feedback from teachers. And then supportive environment comes from some of the student measures. There are some limitations of the data. The logins, as everybody did this, were not secured. So you could, as a student, log in and do any school that you wanted to. You could go in and log in if you had just a little bit of ingenuity on how to log in as a staff member as a student. So there are some concerns with some of the validity of the data. Also, the research base on the CUT scores. And they did give us the data and then take the data back once. We've already had the beginnings of this data, and then they realized that there were some problems somewhat because of the logins. And then also the CUT scores. This was all done through a study with Chicago Public Schools. And they looked at what it took to be successful based on test scores, Chicago Public School, and then said, okay, this percentage of parents answered those questions this way to be a highly performing school in Chicago Public Schools. And they looked at a K-8 building because they don't have middle school. So then they took those percentages of questions and applied them to elementary and then to middle school, and there were some issues with that that bubbled up. There are also some questions that aren't very germane to our district. One of the key questions on whether parents are involved or whether they come to school to pick up the report cards. Well, we get them home to parents. We don't ask parents to come get them. So parents stumbled over that question because, well, no, we wouldn't. And then the percentages come out deficient, and it really is just a different process that other schools use than we do. There are some other initial limitations of that data that came out. You could have 90% of a staff say that the principal does a really good job of communicating a vision, either agree or strongly agree, and still come out as weak. And it was because you didn't have a stronger version of strongly agree. Kind of problematic with how all that came out. So let me tell you what we do know. Well, first of all, there's still more unknowns. The parent responses, they're not going to put that out as there's all that ifiness of how it came about to be anyway. The color coding, we don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know what the data's going to look like. We don't have current data. So now I'll get to what do we know. It's supposed to come out on October 31st. We do have good news that 100% of our schools, all the way early childhood through 12th grade, met their participation targets because you had to have a certain percentage of staff, students, and parents to be able to get this data. And some of our schools worked really hard on doing that, met people out in the lobbies with laptops, ready to go, take the survey, get a cookie if you come and take the survey. All those, we really had to make a big effort to get to that percentage that we needed. So we wanted to present to you some more exact information. I hate to come in to you with, here's what we don't know. But we also didn't want to wait until November and have things published and have you not have heard about it. So I'll try to field questions at this time if anybody asks some.
We have, this the first time this has happened, Karen, the survey?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't have anything to compare it to on a growth curve? And then is this district-wide only, or is it school by school?
It is school by school. There is also some parts of that will be compiled for the district level too, so there's some of both.
We wish, we wish we had more data. We have no data. We don't, we don't have any of the preliminary results even to show, and that's what's so odd about this. However, on October 31st, the media, us, everybody will get at all the same time. So we know we're not going to have a board meeting for a couple of weeks after that, so we wanted to make sure at least the board was aware, or the community was aware, that this is going to be released even without us having preliminary information available to share with our schools or with the community and the board.
Faith, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are a number of issues with respect to the survey that went out to the parents that make the data that's coming in from that question. For example, if I understand correctly, high school parents were asked to rate their students' teacher. And unlike the elementary schools, where in this case they only had one teacher, it was difficult to almost impossible to answer that question. So it's those type of shortcomings, certainly in the parent survey, which was causing a lot of issues and problems with the results and data from that survey.
That is correct. I took the survey as a parent of 203 and went through, and you are asked as a middle school parent, what do you think of your child's teacher? Okay, there are many, so it is problematic to really dig deep into that, and I could take the survey as many times as I wanted. Thank you.
There was no control on it. In fact, we knew we even had students logging in as teachers, you know, doing that too because there was no controls on the access. And because it was just wide open, as long as they got the link, it was easy to get to on the University of Chicago website, and then they just went about it. There's a lot of issues with this. That's one of the reasons why the parent data's not even going to be released, because there's lots of problems with it.
Well, just trying to look at the bright side of things. I guess you've taken the survey, so I mean, will there be something there that's useful to us to at least start looking at and saying, okay, you know, just like when No Child Left Behind came out, it's the spirit of it perhaps more than the actual what, what they actually present to us.
When we got the first set of data, we all went and talked to the principals and went through and looked at some of their data. And even some faulty data can ask you, make you reflect on the question of, well, how do we know otherwise? Or how do we know that this is, is true? And what measurements do we have on our own to be able to talk about this? So I think that that was really valuable. And then also on the effectiveness of discussion, or math instruction, or language arts instruction, there's always room to analyze and reflect on how to do that. And even if the data's a little skewed, you also can look at everybody's data that is skewed and, and ask yourselves a question, well, do you think this is an accurate, you know, mirror or not? So those will be good things to come of that. We'll just have to be careful at taking it, all of it without thinking about it.
Any other questions, board members? We will get you the information as soon as we receive it, and, but I do anticipate some media stories starting to play out sooner than, than we're able to deliver it to the board as we've done with other stuff in the past. Okay? All right. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. The chair will now entertain a motion to suspend rules and adjourn to our workshop setting.
So.
Moved by Ms. Swanson.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Panopoulos. Mr. President, would you take a roll of the roll?
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. Motion passes. We will now move into our workshop setting and address the board report entitled District Goal Four: Community Engagement. And I'm going to ask Dr. Harris to kind of kick off, to kick off and get some background for this discussion. As we recall from the last board meeting, Mr. Paulson and I have some homework to do. And we did some homework in this regard. So after Dr. Harris gives his report, and then Mr. Paulson will report on the results of his homework that is an interview he conducted, and then I'll give a report on the homework handed, and then we'll open up the general discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roman. That is correct. The Community Engagement Committee met last week, and we took all of the information and the discussion that was, took place on the 9th of October, and tried to generate some additional resources, answer some questions, certainly took into the account of all board members' questions, concerns, thoughts about moving forward into the community engagement activity that we felt as a board and a staff that we believe is going to be valuable to us in the long run, get us what we believe we need from the community, and help us make decisions down the road. One of the tasks that we worked on in the committee format, and certainly Mr. Roman and Mr. Paulson can talk about this as we move forward, is we put together kind of a document that will hopefully guide some of our discussion this evening. I had sent copies of that to the board. Does everybody have it? If not, I can throw it up on the screen here. If not, I, all right, bear with me here for just a second. Let me get it up on there. There's going to be a picture of my baseball allegiance.
Yeah, yeah. Just reminding us, keep it short.
Let me center it here. Hopefully it looks right up there. I'm going to walk through this, if I can see it okay. All right. And, you know, this document, and I know several of you have the paper copies, one of the first things, and this is just a reminder to the board, that the board has a very targeted goal. We have a district goal to engage the community and get feedback to help us guide our decision-making and set priorities for us to work together with the community in making decisions for our schools. The board has some very specific goals that they've set out for themselves this year, which is obviously one of the reasons why we're having this discussion. As part of my contract, it's very specific on what the expectations are, and as well as a performance goal for myself as a superintendent. So just wanted to make sure that, remind the board that this is why we're in this discussion. It's critical. It's very important. We all agreed upon that moving forward, to be able to strategically make decisions for the district. Last time, we had a lengthy discussion about the rationale for community engagement. And there's five bullet points there, and I'm not going to read them to everyone. I hope that everybody's comments is somewhere in those, in those five bullets about the purpose. I jotted down notes as we went back, as we went back through and listened to everybody's thoughts about, why are we doing this? Why do we have this goal? Why do we believe it's important to engage our community in discussions about where we're headed as a district? And, you know, again, these are very clear targets of why we're doing what we're doing and what the purpose is of the community engagement. Was there any initial questions from board members about that? And hopefully you had a chance to read it. Any concerns or clarifications with that purpose? Because, and maybe we'll get into that discussions go along. Try to capture that though from the discussion that took place a couple of weeks ago. Questions? Any concerns about that and the intent? Okay. We also had discussions about an outside facilitator. And, and again, I'm not going to read the entire information to everyone. However, and I do believe there was some discussion around the board table about this topic, of whether or not an outside facilitator is needed. And after, you know, listening to everybody's questions, concerns, also having further conversation with staff, you know, we believe it's, it's very critical for several reasons that are listed here on why it is important to have an outside facilitator lead this type of effort. And we all know, and board members I'm sure are familiar with, with any governmental bodies, lots of times when they go out to ask communities, they typically have some type of an outside facilitator. Now, the scope of it is a whole nother question and point of conversation. But I wanted to make sure that we captured the intent here of why an outside facilitator is important, and certainly want to make sure that we have further discussion about that. We can either stop here, I can finish this, and then I think maybe open it up, would that be best? Walk through this. Okay. The next group of bullet points is why the particular vendor that was proposed at the last board meeting, which we tabled, was chosen. And there was a very specific reasons why we thought Unicom was the appropriate vendor. And these were some of the strategic points on why we believed, you know, the committee as well as staff, believed that Unicom was, is the right vendor to help us get to where we want to be. And again, I don't want to read each one of these to you. We certainly can have discussion about each one of them as we go along for clarity and/or intent here. And then?
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we were talking about that at the committee level, if I scroll back up, one of the things that was unique and that I think Jim and I realized for the interview process is that there's different ways to approach this, and Unicom's process was very much more specific and organized towards achieving and delivering those specific bullet points as opposed to the other vendor, which was almost kind of all in the conversation with them having a plan. So we say what value Unicom adds, it's also what value their, their process, how they approach this kind of initiative adds.
And then finally, there was some real conversation we had at the board table about what, what do we expect? What will we expect at the completion of going through this type of a process with this particular vendor? And what are we going to get out of it? And so therefore, this is where we, at least the committee believed the discussion was, listening, you know, to board members' input, about some very targeted recommendations coming from the community. So we have something in hand and not something that we could just draft on our own. Another key component here is to be able to build consensus within the community of the reasons why we make decisions. It's not always about what the decision is. It's the, it's the community's understanding of why we're headed in a certain direction in any, you know, area, why we're making and allocating resources to a particular facility to, for a particular program, or some type of an operational decision, so on and so forth. So, and finally, we would have a model that, you know, in the future, a year down the road, two years down the road, three years down the road, that the community expects when District 200 needs to hear from you, here's how we're going to do it. It's, you know, here's District 200, here's how we're going to get feedback as we move forward on any decision that we believe it's critical to get that input from the community. And certainly that will build an expectation of how the school district and the community engages the community, which is the long-term piece. And Unicom certainly provides that, that piece. Finally, now this is tentative, and I want to stress the word tentative. This was, you know, my thinking, I will own this, you know, where I think some of these topics may land. However, I want to, you know, to show a timeline, and that's, there's some assumptions in here, some assumptions on certain topics. There's also some assumptions on what may come out of that first discussion if we move forward with Unicom. Because the first meeting in January should guide what the next topic should be. I anticipate certain topics, however, I'm not quite sure. Some, we may end up spending an evening on some topic that we're not familiar, we, we didn't recognize the community wants to talk about. So those are, that's why the question marks are there, and that's why the to-be-determined is indicated. But these would certainly be common topics that the community could weigh in on, and certainly decisions we make at the board table on a regular basis. And then finally, and I'll certainly let Mr. Roman or Mr. Paulson elaborate on this, part of what the board will need to do is give the charge to the, to the committee, to the, to the vendor, say, hey, here's what we want. Here's the reasons why, here's what we want, and what we expect when the process is complete. That's the intent here. And I'll certainly turn it over to Mr. Roman and Mr. Paulson, and certainly comment about this or any of the other information, and want to open up the discussion for the board to, you know, weigh in on where we believe we need to head to accomplish our task.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah. Well, I took, I took two tasks. I looked at trying to talk to some references of school districts that Unicom provided to us, and I also did some thinking about, I think one of the other conversations points is what other types of consultants are there that could do this? So first reference is I talked to a school district outside of St. Louis, Rockwood School District, and I talked to some of my clients, neighboring school districts. That was an easy call. Rockwood is 22,000 students west of St. Louis. It's one, geographically, it's one of the largest school districts in the state of Missouri. Talked to board president and another board member who have been, both have been involved in the, in the community and the school district for a long period of time. And they had some challenges within the district related to some administrative issues, and they had a very small group, these are words that they're telling me, they had a very small group of people who were basically going to the media, spinning misleading facts about issues that were included in it, or being dealt with in the district that was impacting the district's ability to make progress in other areas. There was this lack of trust that was growing. So they wanted to make sure they had a good process to engage the community and saw, saw somebody with a lot of experience in implementing such initiatives, in designing and implementing such initiatives. So they interviewed five firms, and he didn't share with me who they were. They, what they really found out was those people that were kind of causing issues and roadblocks really wanted a voice at the table. And they found with Unicom that this process allowed that to happen. One of the things that they found out, one of the results of that process was that with the large participation of the community, and it's a very large geography that they had to deal with, the vast majority, like, I think they said, like, their survey results, 95% of residents were very thrilled with what, what the activities were going on in the district and the process, and the results for students. They were very happy with the district, and that involvement, that process of engaging the community began to negate some of the negativity that was happening. People were kind of re-inclused to participate in the process, and it began to negate some of the negative comments that were happening within the community, and the media was involved in all this. And they saw that the information this other group was feeding wasn't really true and accurate in what they were, what the headlines they were creating. So since then, they've hired Unicom several times, and their process has become a model for how they engage the community. They said that specifically Dan Burns, who was the gentleman that was here talking to us, very easy to work with. They were able to tailor their approach to the specific situation that was that was being dealt with in Rockwood. Staff was very organized. He also, the board president also mentioned that the staff cannot manage the logistics. It's one thing to go to a meeting and conduct it. It's another one to deal with all the issues that happen to happen before and after the meeting and the collection of data, the coordination of the venues, that all this stuff that has to get there to support the evening. And he said there's no way that their staff could have managed the logistics outside of the specific meeting. They love the structure of the process, it's changed their relationship with our community. There was this kind of hidden issue of trust and because of the participation that they've got, the board has a much better relationship. They continue to use those results to guide future decisions years down the road. So, they were very happy with the process. I forgot to mention that, and we've talked a little bit about full identity and branding of this initiative. Their process is called Picture Rockwood. So, Picture Rockwood was the name that was out within the community and all the marketing. So it wasn't just a community engagement process. They actually branded a name and that's how they advertised this. So, it had its own identity as something that's kind of supportive and independent of other board activities. So, that's what I got from Rockwood School District, a little bit closer to home Naperville School District. I talked to two board members, I also talked to some other people that I know in the community that weren't, they weren't members or of staff or the board, just people that I know that attended some of the events. And one of the things that the school board members told me is that one of their desires was to find out if the pockets of concern they kept hearing about were really bigger issues. And through the process, and their process was called Future Focus. And I think some of the graphics that Mr. Burns showed in the last presentation. So that was the identity of their process. You can see how everybody has developed their own identity. They were very happy with the process. They had, like, like Rockwood, they had used Unicom previously and some other survey work back in the early part of the 2000s. They liked, one of the things that they really liked was the fact that forced participants to come to consensus at a table of eight to 10 people, which is different than a traditional, what some might think is a meeting where you just get to talk to the board. In this venue, what happened in Naperville, and I had the opportunity to participate in one of these, is there's probably 15 to 20 tables of eight to 10 people tackling a specific issue and they had to talk amongst themselves and come to consensus of what their table felt about those issues and what their priorities were. So, they found out that people were much more willing to be engaged in those smaller groups rather than having to get into a microphone and talk in front of 200 or 250 people. So they really appreciated that. Two key findings that the two board members shared with me that they didn't anticipate at all was, and the first one was something they never even thought to consider, is that they really found out their students believed in their mission. And they didn't even think to ask that question, but they engaged the students in the process. And the one board member mentioned to me that without a doubt, their students across that district really believed in the mission. So they gave the board confidence that stayed true and there was support behind not just what the community was talking about. The other thing that they learned that was, they knew it was an issue and I think it's something we've talked about here is that they didn't anticipate how important social emotional issues were within their parents and their community. That's something, that's one of the things that really came loud and clear in some of the early discussions. So, that's the feedback that those two school districts have given me. Both, again, both had different issues, not necessarily identical to our issues. You want to talk about your other references or should I just continue on some of the research I did with other companies? Continue. Okay. So, I did a little thinking about what other types of firms do this. And I looked at the major organizations within the state of Illinois, Illinois Association of School Business Officials. I looked at the IASB Service Associates. I looked at Illinois Association of School Boards. Illinois Association of School Administrators, I actually have the binder here. Some of these, some of these groups don't even have categories for their partners of community engagement consultants. They have architects and attorneys and school bus providers, but they don't have a category for this type of consultant. So, and I talked to some other people in the industry and there's, you know, there's a retired superintendent here and there or somebody that does some of this stuff on the side. But never thought it was really a viable alternative to something as significant as we're looking at. There's also a company that I worked with in the past, DeYoung Richter, out of Dublin, Ohio. They do a lot of community engagement across the United States. But my issue with them is they're very, very facility focused. So it's very much built around issues about capacity, facility assessments, and quality of the learning environments, and facility master planning. And our process is much broader than that. So I thought having somebody so specific to a particular issue wasn't consistent with the types of activities we want to go through here and is consistent with the goals that we lay out. So, I don't know of any other consultants out there or companies out there that do what we're trying to achieve. So, that's what I had to share.
Thanks Brad. My homework involved some of the same things and following up and interviewing references that Unicom had identified. But also putting an initial draft of the, of possible charge that the facilitating committee could receive from the board. And I largely relied upon the charges that Unicom had used in other school districts, but I tailored it to what I believe are important here in District 200 from like two years on the board. And I smiled when Brad mentioned that his folks in District 203 were surprised at how important social emotional performance were. Sure, and I had this in mind in drafting this. I included this in our draft, not knowing that Brad had already learned from District 203. And that is the second element of the charge, a possible charge to facilitating, to look at the long-term goals and priorities of the District 200 community with respect to student achievement, including education and social emotional performance criteria. I have learned over the last several years that that element of what we provide in our curriculum to our students and to our teachers is highly important to the overall achievement of our students. I also wanted to emphasize in the charge that we should consider here, or we might consider here, that we want broad-based community involvement. I know that Jim's mentioned a couple of times, a number of times, how important it is to get the 75% of the residents who don't have children on our schools participated. I totally agree with that since I'm one of the 75% myself. But that was emphasized in here when we said we want a current, accurate, and consistent information that reflects the perception of priorities of District 200 community in its entirety. So, Brad made some other suggestions to the language here. But this is just a draft charge that we could consider if we should proceed with this process. I also interviewed a couple of the references as I mentioned. The first person I interviewed is the superintendent of Morton School District 709, Ms. Lindsay Hall. Morton is a suburb of Peoria where a lot of the management and executives of Caterpillar and the families are. And Ms. Hall is originally from the Calhoun, so she's very familiar with Wheaton and Warrenville. And she said that in many respects, the Morton School District is a kind of a small version of the Wheaton-Wareville District. It's an unified district. It has, in her view, the same kind of political, social, income-based profile that we have here. She became the superintendent of District 709 in 2000, at the end of the 2011-2012 school year. Right after, when a district had engaged in a referendum to raise funds for the expansion of three of their buildings, and the referendum failed. It kind of stunned the school board that maybe they were not in full touch with the community. And they wanted to initiate a community engagement process to learn what the priorities and interests and values of their community so they could reflect that into, and incorporate that eventually into a strategic plan. And then Ms. Hall became superintendent after the board had adopted and retained Unicom to begin that process. But she was the superintendent while they engaged in the process. And she said it was unbelievable how valuable this whole process was in her view. At the first meeting, they had over 200 participants involved in a district that has about 2,200, 2,300, 100 students in a community of about 20,000 to 25,000 residents. So, she was pleased with that initial participation. She did acknowledge that over the course of the six meetings they had, the level of participation dropped. But nevertheless, at the end of this process, what was delivered to the board was a comprehensive report in her view, similar to the report that you circulated, Brian, from Elberg School District in the last week, that that board has incorporated into the strategic plan at the beginning of this year, and which they review at the regular board meetings to make sure that what they're implementing is consistent with what the feedback and what they learned from this community engagement process. She thought it was invaluable. And all I did was ask her questions, I didn't ask her to be enthusiastic about it. She was on her own. The other individual I talked to was Gloria Davis, who's the superintendent of the Decatur School District 61 in central Illinois. It became clear in talking to her that the referendum, that the community engagement process, that school district engagement was to support a referendum. So it wasn't this, there was a specific goal and purpose to their community engagement process. Unlike the Morton School District where they engage this process to really learn from the community, what was important to the community and what they should focus in on as a board, which is something that we hope this communication process and board should prioritize if they perform, if they do. There was no ultimate motive or goal in mind other than to, the community has its priorities and to fashion a strategic plan that will incorporate those priorities. So, that's what we accomplished this past week. And I'll open it up to discussion, questions?
One final thing I just want to comment on is the very last thing I have up on the screen here. What we talked a lot about as we finalize this was, what are the deliverables? What are the things that we want to see? You know, we want to make sure that we've got a broad-based community support. You know, broad, we have the right people in the conversations, okay? The second thing is very specific steps and actions that the community believes are the right things to do moving forward. So to guide that, we heard, I heard that last time from several board members about making sure that, you know, we do get some clear direction and not just a laundry list of things that are nice to have, but how to go about it with some targeted actions. So, I think that is something we tried to incorporate here and certainly will be a part of once we get the process going and revisit that on a regular basis and make sure we educate even the people who do come to the process about what it can look like and what the intent is, what the purpose is, out from the very beginning. Certainly want to open up the discussion. Rosemary is ready.
Well, thank you so much for doing all of that research and following up on all of our questions. And I think that really helps. And I just wanted to add something from my perspective. And the new board members probably don't know this, and I'm not even sure that the rest of the board members, I'm looking around the table, as how much they really know about my personal background and my other life before becoming a stay-at-home mom and involved in various community volunteer things. I was a study research director for a market research firm, a national one. And I, my major client was from Winston-Tebaco, but I also did work for Coke Foods and 7-Eleven, so not, not small potatoes at all. My responsibilities included, much like the gentleman who came and spoke to us, to contact, have contact initially with the client, determine what their needs were, design a study for them. If there was a questionnaire involved, if there was a focus group involved, I had to develop the questions such that we got the information that the client was seeking to understand. Then I coordinated the whole deal to make sure that it came in on time and on budget. And that included coordinating field services and data services and mathematicians to analyze things. I ran the data, analyzed the data, made the reports, and made the presentations to the corporate offices. So, I say all this to just let you know that, you know, there's a little line on my resume that says market research, but I think people think I was standing out in the mall asking questions. And it was really more than that. So I have some perspective on what is involved in trying to get information from people and opinions from people. And I granted, this was over 30 years ago. When I started, we were sorting data using cards as opposed to computers, but that evolved. But the basics of how to make sure that you're designing the process correctly, how to make sure that you're pulling a sample that gets the correct people there so that you're getting the information from the people that you need, the process of analyzing the information and making sure that you're looking at those numbers correctly is an art form, the same as any other profession. I mean, I think people just think anything that involves numbers is cut and dry. I'm thinking Mr. Matheson can attest to the fact that that's not always true. There's many ways to look at numbers, there's many ways to look at data. And it all starts with how you set up that process as to what you get out of it at the end. And from my perspective, I know without a shadow of a doubt that if the question is, can we just do this on our own as opposed to go up to some professional firm, we cannot. I mean, we can ask some questions, but we would never be able to have the resources that a professional firm can bring to bear with all of those different people who have expertise in those areas and then have that all coalesce just for us. We just, we can't do it. I mean, forget about the fact that we don't have the time or the staff. We just don't have the expertise to do it, in my opinion. And I believe my opinion is grounded on personal experience. So I'll just, you know, and, and I would say again, though, it does have to do with how you set up that process and making sure that you're very clear, in my case, when I dealt with a client, I'm very clear, what did that client want to know? And so from our perspective, being the client, we have to be very clear, what do we want them to know? So in my opinion, I think a lot of our efforts, assuming we agree that we want to do community engagement, and assuming we agree we need an outside firm, I think any firm that's got the resources and has reasonably good, and it sounds like these have good references, can do it as long as we are clear to them as to what we want. And we should be spending our efforts on developing that clarity as opposed to trying to nibble around the edges as to, should it be this, this or that in a firm? So, and I do have some suggestions for the charge, but that could be maybe a separate conversation, but I just thought I'd put that on the table.
Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone else?
Well, I appreciate the efforts that both have made on the committee. And to me, referrals, recommendations are huge. To have personal experience, they have no reason to not just tell the truth and share their experience. And it sounds like it was very good experiences and they got the results they needed and affected them then in the future. I love Rosemary's perspective on it. And, yeah, I mean, it could be priceless for what we get from it and take forward. There's so many benefits, just not only all the data, but that, you know, we care about what the community thinks and so we're reaching out. And I took part in the roundtable, what was the name of that?
The Shirets.
The Shirets.
Yes.
And it was wonderful. I mean, it was a great discussion and, yeah, I mean, it was fun to target specific groups to get together and, and absolutely agree, you need a professional who's totally focused on getting the community engaged because otherwise it could be poorly attended. And it's going to be a huge effort to get the word out.
Any other comments or questions or concerns?
I'd like to add about the process, both Superintendent Hall and... I'd like to add about the process, both Superintendent Hall and Davis, you're very laudatory about the process at Unicom today. Now, the process used in Decatur was a different process because it was a board engagement to help support the effort to get a referendum passed, which they did get passed, seventy-six million dollar sales tax referendum for facilities improvements in Decatur. And Superintendent Hall was very laudatory about the revised council and directive, a direction that she received from Unicom to make this referendum process successful there. With respect to Superintendent Davis at Morton, she was very praiseworthy about the process used there, which is a process, from the way she described it, very much similar to the process that we heard described from the Unicom representative that spoke to us, with a facilitating committee, with six different sessions, where the first session was used to identify, have the community identify the issues and priorities they wanted to have addressed and include in the strategic plan and not come from the board and be directed by the board. And then from that, develop specifics for each of the issues identified from that first meeting. It ended in a successful list of recommendations to be incorporated into a strategic plan. I also reviewed the twenty-five-page report that Unicom prepared for the Melburg School District, which was circulated by the UBSO. And I thought the recommendations in there were very specific in many regards, and the steps taken, and the steps suggested to achieve those objectives were specific and could be incorporated with not much effort into a strategic plan. And I drafted the charge so that it was clear that Unicom or whatever consultant we should retain if we go ahead with this process doesn't write a strategic plan. They make the recommendations to us, what the elements of that plan will be, and it's up to us then to formulate and finalize that strategic plan. So it's clear that it's something that's endorsed by this board and not just acceptable hardwired from the outside consultant. At least that was my thinking when I drafted the charge, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, again, I'm finding this process to be very informative, and I think it's really important that we address this. I think that, you know, I have to say very clearly that I fully support a community engagement program. You know, I just, I've heard two things tonight that, or maybe three, that I have to reflect on to get me over some hurdles here. But the first one was when we were talking about the, let's see, it was the questionnaire at the state level and how the data was unreliable, okay? And that we're kind of preparing for bad data, okay? If we get bad data out of this, we wasted our time and money. That's so critical. You know, and I guess the other issue, one of the other issues that I'm concerned about is that, I think that, you know, again, we've talked about it, and that is that there's a, you know, we have to get to the community. My reaction is, we have to get to the people that vote, okay? Because those are the ones that are going to decide the course. But more significantly, I guess what I'm a little bit concerned about is the absolute perception that the organization that does this is independent of anything. And I'm a little concerned, when I read the reports that I'm seeing, that they've done a lot of work supporting referendums. And it troubles me that if one perceives that that's our goal here, to support a referendum, you know, we've, you know, I don't care if it's rape, I don't care if it's buildings, I don't care if it's Jefferson, you know, if that's the end product of this, it's tainted in my mind if it is not deemed to be an independent. Rosemary's comments also struck home in the sense that, you know, there are groups out there, again, market researchers. My daughter works for a company, and they send the people into the shopping centers and all that, and they come out with data that, you know, is totally independent, it's a market research data, and, you know, big corporate America lives and drives based on those facts. And it's not a group that's, you don't have to know about school districts here. You know, we're asking questions, and, you know, maybe if we know too much about school districts, we're tainting it. You know, so I'm concerned that, again, when I read these reports, if I'm going to rely on those reports and I'm trying to create community confidence, I'm a little bit concerned that we're not using an independent market researcher. And again, I understand Brad's point about, you know, there's none listed, but I guarantee there's, you know, whoever has those people in the shopping center, and your ex-reployer, et cetera, you know, that's market research. It's just a fundamental thing, and there's, I've got to believe, there's more than two firms in the whole process. But again, I just have to, I'm very concerned that we get an end product. I think it is, you know, so critical. On the other hand, I want this to be an educational process, because I think that, I don't want this to be a wish list, because we can't fund wish lists. We, you know, three years ago, this board basically had to cut costs because it had to face whatever realities there were out there. So if we come back with a wish list, and I can go through some of the findings here about, you know, setting the table for rate increase, or if we want to add B-Team sports, or we want to add, you know, all the things in cut, whatever they were, we have to be able to make sure we can afford them. And so I'm a little leery, to be truthful here, that, you know, we're not, again, walking down this road to say the end product or the recommendations of this group are talking about referendum. I don't want to know what they recommend, because I think we have to be able to interpret the data and make our decisions on it. And if that says, we've got to have more technology, and we have to cut something else to do that, okay? That's going to be a choice. I don't think they're going to come back and say, we need less technology, nor do I think that the consensus of this group will say, charge the, you know, do it by a fee, or do it, you know, we pay for it, or whatever. That's the decision the boards have to make, okay? I think that we will probably see that we want to enhance technology. That would be what I would call an output of this. So I think, again, I just, I'm so concerned that we do not, you know, we have to create the community concept in this study, so.
Rosemary, your lights.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Do you want to speak next?
Yeah, I can take a breath here. I've got a few more questions. You know, I don't want to make this too lengthy. I'm labeled that already, but anyway. But so the, you know, again, that community mix is critical. You know, I've talked about the, you know, the components of the groups. Again, the assessments, I'm not sure I want recommendations. I want data from them, because then we as a board can make decisions on prioritizing those recommendations. Let's see. And again, you know, again, I looked at two oh three, or three oh three study here, and it was twenty-nine percent of the employees in the district, fifty percent, fifty-five percent parents, fifteen percent students, and twenty percent were the, you know, children with parents, or parents of children not attending school, or parents with no children attending school. I mean, you know, to me, any consensus that came out of that report was defeated by those words. You know, it just didn't tell me what I needed to know. So anyway, so I guess, you know, again, I'm hearing what I'm hearing. I love the concept of community engagement. It has to be a trustworthy, independent event, and I believe there are others out there that can do it. You know, and I'm just concerned that the, you know, we truly are giving an independent view of this whole process. That is my conclusion.
Can I add one thing? I'm not, I'm having difficulty understanding if you want data or not want data. I heard it both ways. I've been doing this for school districts for, on and off, for twenty-two years. I'm convinced that there's nobody else out there. We're not looking for market researchers. That's not what we're looking for. We're not looking for PR firms. We're looking for somebody who can conduct a community engagement process, which has all kinds of logistic issues and has experience in doing it. So this is not a data collection of fifty-five percent of the parents want this, seventy-two percent of the parents want this. It's not data. It is specific bullet points that give us direction about specific issues.
All right, let me jump in here. I totally agree with some of what you said, but I just want to start out by addressing this business of using a market research firm to, let's say, serve it versus the process that is being proposed here. You know, when we did, when I did market research, most of the time, the client, because they've been in business many years and had done this a long time, knew what the information was that they were seeking. And so we could skip right to a questionnaire, because we knew what the questions were, the missing knowledge was. But when they were coming out with a new campaign, or they were coming out with a new product, sometimes they weren't even sure what the questions were. And they always started with a focus group to find out from their potential consumers what their perceptions were. And again, those focus groups were structured. It wasn't just, you know, sitting around and shooting the breeze. But you had to find out what were the questions on consumers' minds, what were the concerns, all of that sort of thing, before you could then go and write a questionnaire that you asked over the phone or did something like that. And so I'm thinking that what you're suggesting would be, first of all, at the very least, skipping over the important part of the process, because we don't know yet what all the questions are. And so this process helps us know what are the questions on the minds of our community and the voters. Also, let me just tie in with, I sent, I think everybody, the IASB's report on community engagement was a really long report. But if you look through it, they said there were three types of community engagement. You engage the community by informing them, which is what we largely do with our newsletters and such. You can engage them by consulting them, which is what you do with the survey, and that's like what we did the last time when we were thinking about Jefferson. We thought we had some ideas, and we said, what do you think about these? Or you can engage them by collaborating with them, where they help you determine the questions and the solutions. That is, in my mind, what we need to do, and I think that's what this process is designed to do. As to whether or not Unicom is tainted by it, I, you know, I share a little bit of that concern, I have to say. I don't know exactly how to get around that, because the companies who specialize in this sort of a process, by default, are called in to do lots of different jobs that often involve developing community support around a certain question or a certain issue, so.
There's two reasons why people hire Unicom. There's two reasons. One is to find out what, you know, the community will support when the board has identified a problem. Okay, the board has a problem. They know they have a problem. Board hires them to find out what the community supports to solve the problem. That's one reason. The other reason they hire them, and you heard this from, you know, different perspectives here from different districts, is to help them create a strategic focus. There's two different reasons. So that's, that is, and you can find the different districts out there that use them for different purposes. It's clearly it. You know, I was very directly involved in the three oh three, you know, process. And one of the intent, there was not an intentional intent to engage, there was an intentional intent to engage students and parents. That was the intent, and that was driven by the board at the board table before it even was started. Now, it opened up to the whole community, but there was a lot of discourse at that time. They had a problem. They had a problem with boundaries, facilities, they had a whole range of things going on. Change in leadership, and they really wanted to know what this, and the students were a big part of this. They, there was as many students at these meetings throughout those, because I was at them, as there were adults. A lot of high school kids there. And they all had opinions, because there was a lot of this, they switched the high school boundaries, and everybody had an opinion. That was a hot topic. So the kids were a target. That's why you saw that there. That was intentional. That was targeted. They were asked to be there. Same thing with the parents. Parents were upset because of where their kids were going to school and what was going on in those classrooms with class size and with programming. So that's why. There was a problem. That was the problem. That's why it was intentional there. Our intent, if you look, go back to the purpose, right? I push it back up on the screen here. You know, we heard exactly what some board members were saying. We have to target specific community members who do not have students attending our schools. We have to make a conscious effort to get them to the table. That has to be part of this. There's marketing schemes. I don't even know what they are. How do you get them there? How do you, you know, what's, you know, that's, I'm an educator. And well, everybody else around this table, we're educators. Now, how do we get community engagement there? We need other people to help us do that, to get the people to attend and to participate and to offer opinions. That's the intent here. That's a targeted purpose, a targeted intent. I want to share another, I was hesitant to do this, but I'm going to share it. One of the deliverables from when I was involved in the process, and I've got it up on the screen here, it's a CD-ROM. It's a huge document file, okay? Their process was called Summit Three Oh Three. That was their branding. That was their process. They had twelve different sessions. These are all the, here's the result, or this was the data that was collected by this firm from each session, okay? There was also many other materials that were produced by the vendor. There was communication materials. There was, because they had a lengthy process, they had a midterm report, okay? The scope of what we're looking at, there may not be a need for that, because we're, you know, we're looking at a much shorter timeframe than what they did here. There was twelve sessions. We're looking at six, okay? So there may not be a need for that. There was a lot of newspaper stuff. There was the participants, and I can get to that in a minute. We've talked a lot about who's the participants are. There was data collected, and there was targets intentionally. I'm going to pull up session six, because that's the one I was directly involved in in my role at that time. They, we had the presentation. Every forum had a presentation. And as part of that presentation, you know, they started out by, you know, there was a real specific process to engage the people who showed up, and that was guided by the facilitators. They also listed out, you know, a report from the last meeting. Here's what we talked about last time, just as a summary, where we were. Now, where are we headed this time? Here's kind of where we're headed, you know, in the long term. Then they were talking about, why are you here this evening? And a reminder of what our different topics are. In this particular case, I was assistant superintendent for HR. We were talking about staffing that night. I did about a fifteen-minute presentation talking about what's our staffing profile looking like in the district. We had a big problem with attrition at that time. That was another big target there. We were training them all, and they were leaving. Coming fifteen miles to the east to get ten thousand dollar raises and leaving us, especially at the high school level. That was a problem. Board had identified that problem. And we were trying to get some ideas on how the community, you know, would go about it. So I laid out all the data and all the information about what is. And then at their tables, they had conversations about, you know, what do they want their teachers to look like? What do they want, you know, how, what does the profile look like? And that was that particular one. And we, I looked at other districts and saw what they did. And some high-performing districts went out and got the information from them. What did they do to retain their staff and keep them? And make sure, we wanted to be a high-performing district that sustained over a long period of time. So that's what that particular meeting was about. Now, here is what the firm collected at that meeting. Every table, there were, I believe there was twenty-seven tables that night? I can't see that text there. Forty-seven tables, I'm sorry. Forty-seven tables. Can't see the little screen here in front of me. And every table collected the consensus of that table, and what was the direction from that table. And so this was the raw data that was collected that evening from every single table, from eight to ten people that were sitting at that table. What happened later on then, there was an executive summary that Unicom put together then based on the feedback from those forty-seven tables. And so here was the discussion points that came out of that meeting. And out of that meeting, there was very targeted things to recruitment and retention and compensation of teachers. Had to be a priority. Had to be something that the board worked on, AKA collective bargaining, professional development, all of those topics that sit at the board table. Those were strategic things that the board had to work on then to be able to retain staff. Recruit, you know, experienced people. They said, you know what? We can't have all rookies here. We've got to make sure we were growing. There was a lot of issues there. We wanted to go out and try to recruit experienced people. So this is the type of thing that came out of this, that was the summary of that night. It was just that evening. And every one of those evenings, then you had the raw data, and then you had a summary that was prepared by the vendor, okay, depending on what the topic was that night. And so over time, all these different sessions, all these different topics, it came down to a final meeting where they had the executive summary. And that's what you've seen there. That's what I passed out to you. That's what, you know, how it works. That's a little insight to the process. One other document I want to show you, I went down memory lane here looking at some of this stuff, because quite frankly, what happened was, it drove my work for the remainder of my time in that district from that night. It really did. The things that I worked on for the next three years in the role I was in were directly related to what happened that evening in the board direction moving forward, on how we worked on... we worked on different things. The participants. And again, here is the, they created a list and the data, they had just a, you know, complete list of who all attended. They also started to disintegrate the data, the profiles of who's there. And if we have a targeted profile, we'll hit the target. We'll look for, and if we don't get the right people at one meeting, then we got to work harder for the next meeting to make sure we get the right people there. And we took it meeting by meeting and looked at who was attending and who was there. And it was targeted, we wanted to make sure we had the right, there were some meetings as a dwindle quits, kids quit coming. So then, guess what? The principals got in order and started, you know, get more kids to these meetings because we need their input. That's what happened as it went along there, and the same thing here. If we really want to target, you know, a certain profile of individuals, we can do it. And they collect the data as we go along. But again, these are some of the deliverables. I share this with you and, you know, whatever our target is, you know, the vendor can hit the target. It's very, very specific. And what, you know, then we use the information to guide practice and board strategic focus moving on. If there's any other questions, I skip through those quickly. I mean, there's every topic there, several meetings, lots of data, lots of information, the raw data as well as the summarized data. And what the vendor does, you know, for the staff and for the board, it's very, very important to see that. So I had that example, wanted to share it. I did live it, very small portion of it, but I did. And it did help guide our practice moving forward from it for several years. It still does. I know it's still happening.
I think there are per three, what I perceive to be misconceptions. The recommendations that we would receive from Unicom or any outside consultant are not Unicom's recommendations. They are the recommendations reached by consensus of the participants at these meetings. All right? So they're not Unicom's recommendations. They're the recommendations that came out of these meetings we had, we have with our constituents. Secondly, I have, I have a sense that it's very difficult, will be difficult to get a large representation of the 75% who don't have children in schools. By and large, if there's not a referendum or it's not election year, these people have other interests, legitimately other interests. And it would be difficult to solicit, enlist in this program, but I have confidence that if we use an outside source like Unicom, we'll get as much participation as possible. If it turns out however, that only 20% of the participants are, as I were from District 303, are from the 75%, that's still a valuable cohort of a sample. Because if 80% or 90% of those 20% focused on one specific goal, that's representative of that entire cohort of the community. So just because only 30% of residents who don't have children participate, or 25 of our residents who don't have children participate, doesn't mean that this has been an unsuccessful effort. It may be a very successful effort, particularly if we get a good, solid reading of what those participants really want to see as a goal or a priority within this district. And it's just natural for parents to be more active in the school district and to be turning out for these meetings because they have their children involved in our schools. So I don't think you can look at a certain percentage and say, oh, that's a successful turnout of certain segments of the community because it depends on what sort of information you get from that 20%. Finally, I'm not aware of any report we've received from Unicom, and I have not read them all, so correct me if I'm wrong, where they specifically came up with a recommendation for a referendum held. They have, they have recommended buildings and so forth and facility improvements that needed to be accomplished. But even if they have identified that the community would support a referendum, it doesn't mean that that's going to happen here. And if it does happen here, we shouldn't be surprised or afraid of that. That's what the community wants, all right? If that's what our community wants, then we as a board are obligated to see what we can do to implement. If this community determines, for example, that we need to do something for our early childhood learning community to improve the facility there, and that's, they've identified it as a high priority from this process, we should not be afraid of that result. That's what we want to hear, okay? Our charge to Unicom, if we should go ahead with this process, is to be objective and down the middle of the road, not favoring any sort of communication of ultimate goal, but to get from our community their legitimate priorities and concerns and issues so that we can be informed about what we should do. If it should turn out at the end of this process that that's what the community wants, then as a board, I feel we're obligated to do that. If it turns out that's what the community doesn't want, that's information we need to know so that we can change what we believed our priorities were in the past to new priorities.
I forgot to say, if anybody wants a copy of this disc, I can make it for you. If you want to go through that data, it's a lot of information. If anybody wants to look at it, at what some of the product is, I'd be happy to. I didn't make this for you. If you want me to, I can certainly get it to you. It's a lot of information. It's not something I can forward in an email. It's a lot of information.
First of all, Brad, Jim, echo the thoughts or comments from the others about your hard work and effort. You know, I'm going to try and keep my comments apart from Unicom. For me, this is not about Unicom tonight. It's about really trying to refocus and find alternatives, if you will, to an outside facilitator, whether it's Unicom or whomever. I believe that, I personally believe that if we were to, let me back up. I believe that the community engagement should be the board participating actively in those sessions and really being the face to give all these people across the district an opportunity to know that the board is fully committed and interested in their comments in a public setting. Not a third party doing that on our behalf, but we taking the time, whether it's one night, five nights, whatever, you know, we were elected to do this, be there so these people can actually engage with us and know that our hearts and our interests are in their, for their best interest, if you will. So again, I don't want to have, my comments aren't relative to or regarding Unicom tonight, but rather I believe too much data is overwhelming and misleading and it's challenging to manage it. I just believe that the keep it simple philosophy has wonderful merit in these type of settings. You know, I too did some research trying to, you know, find out, you know, other alternatives, other solutions. And again, you guys probably know this document exists, but I was duly impressed with it. It's a 45-page document from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and it's a clear, concise roadmap that mirror images everything we're trying to accomplish. And it's done within the district and the school board. Again, it may be old news to everybody, but I found it compelling, quite frankly. There's a section in there that is an exact roadmap on what we can do as a board and staff, a six-week process. And again, I don't know the outcome of this, but it is to me a template that we can take this responsibility and use this 45-page document put together with tremendous reference materials and a lot of hard work from somebody at the state level on a clear guideline, template. Execution is all we have to do, and it should give us what we're looking for. And it would probably be done at a fraction of a cost. So my goal tonight was just to, you know, think outside the box, provide some other input, some other ideas, and really just have everyone kind of reflect on that, whether it's this idea or some other idea. But I, if you haven't read this document, maybe you have. I had never read it. I did, I found this through my Google research. And, you know, there's about, I mean, it's just, well, it's well-written and it aligns every step with what we're trying to do. And it's a six-week process, and I think it would be a good litmus test to find out, do we jump in both feet with an outside facilitator for X number of thousands of dollars? Or did we gather some pretty darn good information in this six-week window? So those are really all my comments tonight, really. I'm just, again, trying to have some provoking information that might, you know, make us think a little differently about the process, whether it's right or wrong, but just another idea that I thought, again, you may, Rosemary, you may know about this document, pretty impressive for me when I read through it and saw the exact, I mean, all the elements are there, we just have to execute it. And then analyze what we find out and take some action on it. So those are my comments.
Well, if I may, I want to say thank you. I'm glad that you read that document. That actually was the document I was referring to that I sent to all of you. So actually, everybody has that document, hopefully, and hopefully read it. And actually, as a follow-up to our last meeting, or was it the meeting before, but Mr. Matheson had asked, are there, do any of our professional associations offer that sort of thing? I did get in touch with the person who is the director of field services, who actually is also a resident of our community. So she's very familiar with Wheaton Warrenville. And talked to her about that and about what we were seeking to do. And what that is, is really a document to board members talking about what community engagement looks like, that inform, consult, collaborate that I was talking about. It's actually not a roadmap for how to do a specific community engagement. And she said that actually what they're hoping to do with that document is to get other boards to the place where we are currently seeking to do that sort of collaborative, ongoing engagement that most boards only think of the engagement as the inform or the consult, but not the collaborative and ongoing. So that's actually the purpose of this initiative, this board, this IASB initiative. And I had asked her whether our association actually could provide those services. And the answer was no. What they've done in the past are very focused, if a board wanted to do role-setting, they could come and do one town hall, sort of a meeting. They would do that, but not of the extent that we're talking about trying to sort of suss out what people's priorities, concerns on a whole range of issues are. They're not at that point yet. And they also hope somewhere down the line to be able to put together that book of resources that you were saying, Brad, that you couldn't really find anywhere. That's what they're hoping to do. But I just want to be clear about the fact that that is not actually a six-week guideline to what we want to do. It's to help us know what kinds of questions to ask about how the process is going, not to actually do the process. And if you want, I can give you her phone number and you can confirm that yourself. But I did follow up, and I think it's great actually that you read it. And she said, thank you so much that your board is actually thinking of the association as a resource. So she's happy about that.
I think we're bouncing around what the process is going to be here. And I'm still, you know, and I think that's what I'm struggling with a bit. You know, and I think that I'm disappointed a little bit that a consultant that we're engaged doing this isn't leading us down this path a little better. I'm envisioning, you know, the detail that I think the contract that we were looking at, as well as the program that was conducted at 303, was a very heavy-duty program, okay? And I think what I heard Jim mentioning was the, was kind of a shorter-term, let's find out what the questions are. And, you know, once we then find out the questions, then maybe we decide that we want to look into those five items. I mean, when we go down and look at, you know, 15 different meetings, and I don't know if we can solve it. We talked about this when we talked about goals, you know, how many goals can we deal with in a single period? Part of what we've been trying to do is set up a process for dealing with these kind of issues as we go forward. And I'm having a little bit of a concern here that we're jumping into a contractual arrangement that's at both feet, that maybe we need to do a component of it first, identify what we believe are the pieces of this thing, and then decide whether we want to go with both feet or whether we want to focus on five or six of those items and defer the next three to a period of time we can do that. And I guess I'm disappointed a bit that the consultant who's the specialist in this, you know, isn't saying that to us. You know, that troubles me a little bit. Now, I did talk to one of the group myself, and I talked to the YMCA. They are, you know, they had a program, you know, I think it was a two or three-session program where they brought in a facilitator. And that facilitator they engaged was out of their national YMCA program. So, you know, and the comment was, I talked to their president yesterday, and it's kind of to me is, our long-range goal, meetings are totally focused on those three meetings, okay? What we got out of those gave us the ability to decide what we felt was the most important and guide us for the next 10 years in our community here. So I feel like a little bit here that we're going through this process, and I think, Brad, what you're referring to is the market research, that's where I'm struggling with it. I think that ultimately I want to find those details, but maybe on the three components or the identified problems. So, you know, and I think that's where I'm having a bit of a problem. I don't feel that I'm capable of making that decision without the guidance of a consultant. And I appreciate Rosemary's comments with the background she has because it's helped me focus a bit on that. You know, again, Jim's comment of a more, let's identify the problems and then let's decide from there how many problems we want to address. You know, I think that's how I would like to approach this. You know, that's kind of where I'm at on it, so. Well, my initial response is that what you perceive to be a problem might be different than what Rosemary sees to be a problem. And what we really want is to understand what the community perceives to be a problem. And that is the first step in this process. After the facilitator came this forum, the first, very first meeting is to have the community identify what it perceives the issues are. And then the follow-up sessions address those issues. So it's whether we want to go the ground-up identification of the issues or a top-down approach. And a true, in my view, a true community engagement isn't directed to achieve a specific result. It's directed to obtain from the community what it believes the priorities for our district should be. And then in the follow-up sessions to address those identified priorities with possible solutions or resolutions to achieve those priorities. And that's the process that District 203 is following, that's the process that District 303 followed, that's the process that Morton School District followed, that's the process that was laid out to us by the Unicom representative at our committee, the whole meeting at the end of September, with a specific flow chart of how this should be achieved. So...
The first activity, in the Unicom process, and again, I attended, I went through the whole thing, and I pulled this one document up here. The small workgroup activity in the tables, paying a who shows up at the first meeting, is right here's the task one. It says, keeping in mind the district's vision statement, the charge from the boards, so on and so forth. What topics do you believe the school district needs to discuss in that subsequent meetings? Look at that first task. And this is what is generated from that table and that discussion for, you know, the eight to 10 people that sit at every table. So that first meeting is critical. That's why in that tentative agenda I laid out there, I don't know whether those will be the topics. They might be the topics. I anticipate those being the topics, but they may not be the topics that the community wants to, you know, share with the board. And so that's what Unicom does. That's their process. If that's not what's going to be right for our board, for where we're at today, that's okay. Then we need to look a different direction, whether it's, I am very familiar with the YMCA, I was part of the focus groups there. They hired, they had one person running it. They were targeted focus groups, they invited specific people to the meeting. As a superintendent of schools and one of those service areas, I was invited, you know, involved in that. A couple of our principals went. You know, and I know there was a variety of people there. That's a whole different approach than what this is. Totally different scenario where you target people with titles in the community or a specific profile, and you have them come to a room, a group of about anywhere from 12 to 15 people, and you have a conversation with them. Now, the board members there at the Y, and they did not participate in what Jim gave me, I was talking about, I think, if I'm correctly wrong, Jim, is that, you know, have the board members guide or lead this or guide this in some fashion. You know, that's a whole other option. So I think, you know, there's different ways. I mean, you have to go back to what is the intent here? What is the purpose? I shared this one document example because that's what will happen in the first night if we choose Unicom. If we don't, then we would go a different direction. But that is the way they work it and how it goes with their particular process. And certainly, at least what I felt as superintendent, where we were at, kind of a, we were at a kind of a turning point as a district or at a point to hit the reset button. Because I even think some of the board decisions, you know, most recently have been based off some previous information... off some previous information from several years ago. And it's time to hit the reset button and think about where we should be headed for the next five to seven years. Where should we focus our efforts, even the staff as well as the board? That was my thinking, you know, from my seat as a perspective. Certainly, if the board wants to go a different direction, can certainly do that. However, you know, we need to think about, go back to what the purpose is. Right back to those first five bullets. What's the purpose? Then you can determine who the right, what the right process is, or what the right vendor is. So, I think we need to take a step back here again and look, you know, is this what we want to do or is it not? If it's not, then we need to head a different direction. That's just my thinking at this point, certainly.
I think the only question I have is whether we're entering into a contract that covers whatever it is, $50,000 of committed 15 meetings. Or are we doing a, you know, what I'll call get our feet wet, identify issues, and then move forward from there? That's where I'm having a problem here. I think we're entering into a full-blown program that I may not want to, once I see the result. I'd like to, you know, hire them to do a thing. And that thing may be this kind of, you know, smaller group approach. Not, you know, again, you know, I'm not the consultant. I want to identify, I want to understand where we're going with it a bit, versus committing to the entire engagement on day one.
We might have to, if we wanted to go a different direction, more in a direction that you commented about, like at the Y or, you know, somebody else, probably would be a different consultant. Because Unicom, that's not their strength. That's not what, you know, their intent is. That's not how they work through and gather community, public opinion research. They have a particular process that they like to use, and that's their brand. That's their brand. Now, we did hear from another vendor, you know, the committee did, that, you know, a little more flexible. They didn't have a process. They were, say, "Hey, whatever you guys want to do, we'll do it." You know, if you get, that's a different vendor. There are different vendors out there, depending on what we want to do. Probably would choose a different vendor if we had a different scope and a different purpose and a different focus.
You know, based on the vetting we've done, I don't have the problem with the, you know, following-through concept with Unicom. I'm just, I hate to get that committed on day one. I mean, you know, again, I'd like to see the general idea of where we're going here, and then as we deal with that interpretation. Now, if that's the only way they do it, you know, then that affects me how I'll conclude. I just, I don't know that I want to jump in until I have a better feel for the process.
Well, Jim, I just want to make clear, never did Unicom propose 12 or 15 community engagements. They were, there were six meetings. The first meeting would identify the issues that would be addressed at the following five meetings, and that in May or June, depending upon when we kicked off, we'd get a final report from them about what was learned at the five, actually, all six meetings, but certainly at the five workshop meetings that addressed specific topics. And the fee for that would be something less than...
Well, their fee's a monthly fee. I mean, they would do 12 sessions if we want to do 12 sessions and carry it into next year. I mean, they will work for us as long as we want them to, you know. They're, it's a monthly fee. That's how they work it. So, I mean, if you want them to work for you for six months, they'll work for six months. You want them to work for a year, they'll work for a year. I mean, that's how they work. That's how they, this particular firm works.
But the proposals were six meetings, and the projected total fee for conducting...
Oh, I'm sorry.
All six meetings were something in the neighborhood of less than $50,000.
That's correct. That's correct.
In the book we got from them, whichever this one is, on the presentation, I mean, they are very specific on exactly the steps they would take. So, I'm not sure, Jim, if you're suggesting, do you want them to work with us to figure out the questions, or just the committee at first, and then before they jump in and do the whole, get the groups together and the workshops, surveys, and so forth? I just, whatever, if we're going to do this and present it to the community, we want to do it well. I mean, we don't, and we want whatever we get from it. We want it to be worthwhile. So, I think, I, I think we are a big enough unit and a big enough budget and respect the opinions of our community enough that we want to do it well. And we know how difficult it is to get people to come out on an evening, I mean, or a day. I mean, it's impossible to get people to have the interest to come out. But if they target them and say, "We want you," I mean, I'm, what comes to my head is, "I'll be in charge of the Realtor Group, and I will get all, you know, and I can get a whole table of them, and they'll be excited." And so, if each little head person, and they, I get to find them, and yeah, could we do that? We could, but we, there's not the resources. I mean, do you or I or have the time or efforts to pull that bigger area? We just don't have it. So, I don't know how we can do this well and get a real representation of opinions. And then it's really respecting what the community, that we're caring this much and reaching out to them that much. I mean, if nothing else, it's going to give us a lot more respect in the community that we do care about them, and it'll be a whole buzz going on. And I mean, if it's done just a little community here or there, or, you know, just that nobody's going to know, or, and can we really rely on what that input is? And Jim, I could almost see a spin that if we're up there, they're going to think we're, you know, directing it in a certain way. I just think that if we're going to do it, we do it well, and I don't think, I really don't think that they're going to think, "Oh, you're trying to get a referendum," because it's not, there's going to be such a broad base of subjects that it's not, you know, could it be a piece of it? Possibly. But I think it's more important to just reach out to them, and the only way to do it is 100%, and do it well and professionally, and it's going to reflect on us, and they'll appreciate to be respected, to be reached out. I mean, you got to pull them out of, off that couch and get, and that's going to take a huge effort.
Maybe I'm confused by what we're talking about here. I saw a list on 303s that had, you know, I don't know, 10 different meetings. And each meeting was a topic. Okay? I'm looking in here, and there's maybe six in there. Okay? Those are topical meetings. Okay? Somewhere along the way, there's a process that's going on that identifies what those six topical meetings are going to be.
That's the first meeting.
Right. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at, step one. Okay? So, if I can move along and get that understanding, it makes my life more simpler in deciding whether this is the ideal thing. I mean, I'd like to conduct step one. Okay? And once we get the result of step one, we know what we've got. And then we identify whether we want to go on to the next six meetings or not. I mean, I don't want, and I think, again, what's the likelihood of getting those same participants out six times? Okay? That concerns me. You know, again, we're going to get, you know, somewhat, you know, I'll call it current, you know, only kind of perception then. I think there's people like us, as you've called it, that are not going to attend six meetings. Okay? And then, so I'd like to get a good, solid cross-section, day one, and identify the issues. And then, from there, we decide whether we go, how we go forward, I guess is a better way of saying it, versus whether we go forward. Okay? And I think that's what I'm seeking here, and that's the process that I'm not understanding.
Well, a couple of points. First of all, one of the charges that we would require, or that we would give Unicom is to give demographic information, or profiles of participants at the meeting, so we would have a fair understanding. And frankly, Jim, if we have 450 participants at the first meeting, we're not going to get the same 450 participants at the second meeting, but we'll have a demographic profile of the participants at each meeting. That's what we're going to require of Unicom. And as Brian pointed out, this is a month-to-month engagement. If it turns out, for whatever reason, that we're dissatisfied with whatever happens at the first meeting, we as a board, I guess, terminate...
There's 30 days, it's in there.
Yeah, terminate the agreement and stop it there. But, so that's always an option, because it is a month-to-month agreement. But the process that Unicom has laid out for us, they have successfully used at a number of school districts. So, they're very confident about the process. And from the people I've talked to and the people Brad's talked to and others, the results have been very worthwhile.
Can I ask, Jim, can you give me an, oh, Mr. Matheson, Jim's here. Can you give me an example, a hypothetical, of an output from their first meeting that might make you say, "Yeah, we should continue," versus an output that might make you say, "No, this isn't worthwhile"? I mean, I guess I don't even know exactly. I understand the general hesitancy to commit to big things. I mean, we all feel that way, but can you give me an example?
Well, let's say that we talk about, let's say technology is one of the issues, okay? And then we go into a whole, you know, a second phase process, and we have a group of people there, and we're going to, I think we're expecting a definitive response. Okay? I'm not sure we're going to get a definitive response. Are we going to, are we going to charge fees for the computer access or equipment? Or are we going to, you know, take it out of the general revenue I called? You know, those are the decisions that, that I don't think that component would potentially guide us. Okay? Because it's not going to be a definitive, "Oh, no, we only should be fees." Okay? So, you know, consensus is a hard word for me to accept, because I think ultimately we've got to make the call. Do we need, you know, do we need technology improvement? Absolutely. Do we have a plan for that? Absolutely. Do we have a buildings plan in play, a long-term plan of buildings? Yes, we do. So, we've got all these things in play, and now we've got to figure out how to pay for them. Okay? So, if the end product is only referendum, that's hard for me to accept. Okay? Because that's one of the choices, maybe, but it's not the one I'm seeking from this group. Okay? So, I want to make, you know, I just want to make sure that I understand the question that's going to be dealt with in detail, community. You know, if it's all wish list things, it doesn't tell me anything, because we can't afford those wish lists. So, I don't want to continue with six meetings that are going to come up with wish lists that we can't afford to pay. And so, and again, I just want the community to input as much as we can, but I don't want it to lead to decisions that we cannot deal with, you know, and that's my point.
And you know what? Oh, I'm sorry. No. And you know what? I totally agree with you, and that was one of the reasons why at our last couple of discussions, I kept talking about the word "trade-off." And I would say, in terms of the charge here, I would like to see trade-off in here. And so, at the very first point, I would rather have it read something like current accurate consistent information that reflects the perceptions, priorities, and trade-offs of the District 200 community. Because you're right. It's easy to say, "Oh, 85% of the people support this, only 45% support this initiative, so we should do this and leave that aside." But the 35% don't see it that way, unless we've had a community discussion that talks about trade-offs. So, that would answer a big question, because I agree with you. A wish list, as we've seen it in these reports, wouldn't be helpful to us, but some reading on trade-offs would.
Dr. Harris, could you describe, and I know you had your one, and you said you spoke for about 15 minutes? So, because when the public comes in and they're sitting at their tables, and they don't know, you know, probably, do they target the people that come to a specific meeting? No. So, they just come. And you tell them the subject, give them some background, "Here we are, where we go, what we got." And then they discuss, and probably from that table discussion, the importance of it to them, and then it's compiled. So, I understand what Jim's saying. I don't want it, you know, it's just going to be, "Well, yeah, we want this, this, and this." I think it's more, number one, they're being educated, and then their discussion of how important their vision of it is.
Typically, at every, the way that this process would work, there is an information, there has to be some type of information shared, you know? And it's usually, usually kind of a state of the district in that particular topic. If it's student achievement, it's student achievement. If it's, you know, facilities, it's facilities. If it's finance, it's finance. And then talking about, you know, then depending on what the focus is, you have guiding questions. I pulled this up here, because this is what, you know, the first meeting, it's talking about what topics do you want to explore further? Rank them. I mean, Murlow, this is every table. Then you take all 47 tables, and then you try to, you know, assimilate that data to see where the mood of the room is. And then one of the key questions, and that's the first meeting. Okay? Let me just go to a different meeting here, show you an example. Let me pick a different one. I don't know which one this is. I don't know what the topic is here, but I'll find out. Number four. Let's see here. Well, this was enrollment. This was about the growth factor in enrollment. And, you know, the discussion is, you know, the enrollment, what do you see as major impacts? You know, what, how is the enrollment going to impact? That was a big issue at the time. Growth was an issue. And what direction, you know, what strategies or what, you know, what different options does the district have moving forward? So, there's guiding questions at every table, depending on what the topic is. And that's what you hire the vendor for. They're the ones that generate the questions, and those kind of evolve as you go. I'm trying to get into, I'm going to find a different one here.
Before you, before you do that, just in response to your question, here's the thing that concerned me. I'm going to be very specific. Rosemary, you asked me that question. Let's say one of the topics here is the Jefferson issue. Okay? We recently had a vote where X percent of the community did not support the position that we, that was being proposed. Okay? Let's say we have a community event. We have no control over the audience. And let's pretend for a minute that, you know, I'll call it that, you know, and again, we were at a board meeting at Hubble, you know, that had very strong support from people behind it. And that night, 90% of the group was totally supportive of that program. And, you know, in the end result, that was not how the board was deciding. So, you know, that's why I'm a little bit concerned if we go into a topic like that, and that becomes one of the settings, that we get a true reflection of the community that obviously we didn't get the night of that board meeting. Okay? Et cetera. So, that's the kind of items that I'd like to say, is this, is this worth having a separate distinct meeting? Because, you know, somewhere we have to enter that in our own minds. We as a board have that responsibility to decide whether it's factual, who the makeup of that, you know, the demographic, if you want to call it that, or we're going to have the same problem we're having with the, you know, the interpretation, the, you know, this thing where the parents weren't even considered. So, that, that's the kind of specific that concerns me a bit. Okay?
Here's the technology. This was the technology discussion. You know, you referenced that topic before. And what the tables were asked to do was to prioritize, you know, in priority order, what is, you know, what should we do as far as technology, you know, as far as there was infrastructure? In the presentation, there was a lot of information that's shared. And then basically, should we get devices? Should we, you know, do infrastructure? Should we do web solutions? You know, what, what's the priority here? And also, you know, what's, you know, what is the priority at the different levels? That even breaks it down to what would be a reasonable solution at the elementary level, what's acceptable and a reasonable solution at the other levels? You know, that was what the table talk was here, and that was the result that came out of that and where they've been headed.
Did you flip down, or did you see what the result was?
Well, now, this, yeah, this, that, you know, here, they talked about whiteboards, LCDs, that did not exist in any of the classrooms at that time. So, they're saying, "You know what? You got to have these things." Okay? At that time, the buildings didn't have it. I remember it well. It was an issue. We had blackboards and whiteboards. And we did not have any type of digital environment that was going on. The wireless.
That example right there is exactly what I'm getting at. That's one that we as a board will decide on, whether, no matter what this process is. We have to stay current with technology. So, it's recommended that be a process in place. We have a process in place. We're training the, our staff to incorporate more technology. We have to find a way to fund it. There's nothing on there how to fund it.
Here's what the board did. They implemented a technology fee for every student in the district to help support some of these plans. Didn't pay for the whole thing, but it helped it. That's what happened about 15 months down the road. A $150 technology fee was included for, it was more for high school than it was middle and it was elementary because of the needs and the equipment needs. That's what happened. There was a fee attached to it. That, that took months of discussion to get there. But that was what happened in the long term at the board table, based on what the community said. And they pay it. They still pay it today. Okay? That's what happened there. Again, that was back in '08. So, things were evolving at that time. We were in every district at that time. So, but at that time, it wasn't real clear whether that was an important priority there or not. I mean, it was evolving. You know, should we sock a lot of money into these things or not? I mean, that was the topic of discussion. And, you know, the district ended up paying for a lot of that through their own, you know, budgeting priorities and so on. But, and the kids, more on the devices. And I can tell you, that district's, what do you say, is more advanced than we are when it comes to stuff in the classroom. And it was a direct relation to what happened in 2008. And it led to decisions for the next five to seven years at the board table, making budget decisions and program decisions and staffing decisions, and what was the priority there? It was a priority. The community said it was a priority. The board made it a priority. That's a perfect example of how that went. They didn't lay out how to do it that particular evening, but then it was, you know, here, there was the different levels. You know, what's important at each level, what needs to happen. Then district figured it out. I can just tell, I know what happened five years down the road. And to run back to your question there too. I see that they had a person from the outside of the district came in and gave a presentation about the possibilities of integrating technology into the classroom. That's what the presentation was tonight. It was an outside person, somebody who did not work in the district. That's what happened there. I remember Terry Tamlin was the person.
Well, I certainly don't want to cut off anybody from making more additional comments, but I'm getting a sense that it probably exhausted most of what we want to say tonight. I would encourage those, if you have any further questions, to contact either Dr. Harris, Brad, or me, so we can address them at our next community engagement meeting. And then I would anticipate, although, I anticipate that an action item at the next board meeting will be the proposal, Unicom proposal, and we'll decide one way or the other what to do about it. But I do want to say that I think this discussion was very fruitful, very good to get our thoughts, our concerns, our worries on the table and get them out so we have an understanding of what each of us is thinking about and what our concerns are and consistent with those operating principles that we've raised previously. Thank you very much.
Just one quick thing to add. I forgot to mention, a couple of board members I talked to said if anybody wanted to call in directly, they'd be more than happy to have that time. So, if you're interested, I have all members in there.
And I just want to repeat that again, that's the huge people to me. Like, these are people that've gone through it, Dr. Harris has, these other districts. And so, for us to be questioning and doubting when they found it great benefit, it directed them to the future, the community heard, yeah, I just don't think there's a downside to it. I mean, we have to go with, there wasn't one negative from those districts, so.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Senator, do we have any? No? Seeing no public comment. Seeing no public comment, then I then ask for a motion to reinstate the rules and return to closed session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property and litigation. There'll be no action taken at the closed session. Do I have such a motion?
So.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Watson, second by Mr. Paulson. Senator, would you take the role in the vote?
Mrs. Swanson, yes. Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The motion passes. We're now moving into closed session.